Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, May 6, 2025. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strasburger. Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Lavell President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. For those that are able, please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for a moment in silence.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation without invisible political liberties.
Thank you. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamations. I'm beginning with Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for being here. I have two very special proclamations this morning. Really great accomplishments on both parts. And I think we'll start with the sliced pizza. Where are you at, Rico? Come on up here, Rico, would you? And your staff and anybody you have with you, please. Jeff, come on up too. Yeah. Here they are, folks. The makers of the world's best pizza. Global, not city, world. What he'll do is I'll read this. So for many of you who have not tried the world's best pizza, the first shop was in Beachview, my home neighborhood. You know, how many years ago was that, Rico?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years ago open. He now has five or six locations. And I hear you're opening a restaurant in Carnegie.
Yep.
Your dad's old food. Anybody who knew Timmy Lenardi, who's Rico's father, late Timmy Lenardi, he's like the godfather of pizza, you this guy. And he made the best food. And to this day, I will say, I think I liked his pizza just a little bit better than Rico's. Okay, that's Sherry's. Sherry doesn't make pizza. Okay, whereas, Slice on Broadway has proudly served the Pittsburgh community for over fifteen years, delivering quality, consistency, and passion in every slice at all six of their locations. And the company's owner, Rico Lenardi, has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the pizza industry and the local business community, elevating standards and representing Pittsburgh with pride. And Chris Ostapenko, close enough, Chris, a fifteen-year employee of Slice on Broadway competed at the prestigious 2025 International Pizza Expo in Las Vegas, crafting award-winning pizza using the very same dough, the very same sauce and cheese served to customers every day. And whereas, winning Best Cheese Slice is a monumental achievement that puts Pittsburgh pizza on the global stage. And Slice on Broadway can now claim to have the world's best cheese slice. And Slice on Broadway, Broadway's achievement brings international recognition to the city of Pittsburgh, its team members, and its loyal customers for this extraordinary accomplishment. And whereas, or not therefore be it resolved that Slice on Broadway has officially earned its place in history, in pizza history. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 6, 2025, to be Slice on Broadway Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor say aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill, for having us here today. We're honored to be celebrated. Congratulations to Chris, who's been, he was one of my first employees I hired fifteen years ago. We set up home in Beachview, where my parents are from. And we're so happy to be part of the community and win this award. And as we grow, grow with the city and bring recognition to us. So we thank you for having us here today. And congratulations again to Chris and the rest of our team at Slice. Thank you.
you brought with you. Come on, please. Come on, Vic, you, Tommy. Come on, Tommy. Come on, just stand up here with him and look good, would you? Want the whole team, right?
Yes.
They're all part of the team. While they're coming up here. Oh, oh, Acting Chief Devine is here. All right, Marty, I'm glad you're here, buddy. So, you know, I'm longtime friends with Sean and Sherry now. But Sean and I grew up in the Beachview neighborhood eating sliced pizza. Well, it wasn't sliced then, but, you know, it was more Fiori's and Vito's then, I guess. But you know, Sean, many, many years ago, it's been how many years now, Sherry, since you started? Fifteen?
No, yes, it's been since 2007.
Yeah, we were on the golf course and Sean was telling me about your ambitions. And I was like, yeah, that's great. That's great. Yeah, that's great, right? Yeah, your wife's going in the construction business. Sure, right. You know, I was pessimist, I guess you would say, but boy, have you proven me wrong and everybody else wrong. So I'll go about the proclamation. Whereas, the city of Pittsburgh and Western Pennsylvania region take great pride in honoring individuals whose hard work, resilience, leadership, and service to others reflect the core values of our community, strengthen our economy, and inspire others. And whereas, Sherry Thomas, a lifelong resident of Pittsburgh and founder of S.B. Thomas and Associates Incorporated, has been named the 2025 Small Business Person of the Year of the Pennsylvania by the U.S. Small Business Administration in recognition of her outstanding leadership, business success, and community engagement. And whereas, raised in the Mount Washington neighborhood of the city of Pittsburgh, hardworking, blue-collar family, Sherry learned the values of determination and integrity from a young age. She became one of the first in her family to graduate college, earning a business degree from Duquesne University. Whereas, Sherry utilized her federal contracting and construction management expertise to build her own business, S.B. Thomas, from the ground up, growing from a one-woman operation into a thriving construction management firm with a local, national, and international footprint. Whereas, Sherry utilized her federal contracting and construction management expertise to build her own business, S.B. Oh, I read that. Sorry about that. Whereas, Thomas is a woman-owned and woman-led advisory construction management firm based in southwestern Pennsylvania. That has delivered projects across multiple sectors, including higher education, K-12 schools, health facilities, multifamily housing, and heavy highway. Whereas, beyond her professional accomplishments, Sherry is a tireless advocate for women and girls in construction, serving as president of the Pittsburgh's Chapter of National Association of Women in Construction. Now, you may, she may look familiar to you because she's here every year. And Councilwoman Gross usually, you know, does the proclamation for that reason. And I love what you do, bringing construction into young females and teaching them the trade. There's so much opportunity there, as you know. So I think that's one of the most special things you do. Whereas, beyond her, now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Sherry Thomas as she embodies the spirit of Pittsburgh, leading with vision, mentoring with purpose, and building a legacy of excellence that uplifts her community and inspires future generations. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, May 6, 2025, to be Sherry Thomas in the City of Pittsburgh Day.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right.
I just want to say, look, as Sherry's husband and business partner, I've had a front-row seat to this amazing small business story. And yesterday, you know, when we were in DC and Sherry went across that stage and accepted this award, I was in the front row again, right there, literally in the front row. And to see someone that you love so much, that's worked so hard for so long, be recognized in such an amazing way, and, you know, to be recognized again here today, I really just can't even put into words how proud it makes me feel, other than to say, Sherry, I love you. I'm proud of you. And there's no one else more deserving of this award than you.
So, thank you to City Council and especially Councilman Coghill for putting this proclamation forth and recognizing our team at S.B. Thomas during National Small Business Week. I am deeply honored to stand before you as the recipient of the Pennsylvania Small Business Person of the Year Award. As Sean mentioned, I accepted the award in Washington, DC. But being recognized back home in Pittsburgh, where I was born and where S.B. Thomas was born, is just so much better. This is also a time to be grateful for those who helped make this award possible. We have members of the S.B. Thomas team here today to share the celebration because this recognition is not just a personal achievement, but a testament to the hard work and dedication of our team, because without them, this is not possible. I always say that we have the best team in the region, and I would put us up against anyone, big or small. And this award is an affirmation that we have the best team in the state. Thank you to the S.B. Thomas team. To our clients, like the city of Pittsburgh, S.B. Thomas is a small business that has accomplished big things. In the beginning, you took a chance on a small, unknown business, and we could not let you down. Your programs in support for women-owned businesses gave us the chance to compete for your work, and we are thankful that you have chosen us. To our friends that came out to support us today, Vic, Marty, Tommy, thank you. Anthony, they've been lifelong friends of Sean, they grew up together, and that's what Pittsburgh spirit is all about. These guys have known each other for years, and it's amazing. And we truly appreciate the support you're giving us today. To my family, just like S.B. Thomas, I was born and raised in Pittsburgh by hardworking parents. My father was a steelworker and my mom worked for US Air. My mom's here today, and this award is a result of all of her support and sacrifices that she made so that I could follow my dreams, even though I didn't know what they were sometimes. Thank you, Mom. To my husband and partner in this journey, as we work to grow this business, you have seen me at my best and at my worst. You always remind me that I can't be in the fight and manage the battle at the same time. And as I walked across that stage and accepted that award in DC, I just want you to know that I could not have done it without you there with me. Thank you for all of your love and support. So, starting a business is hard. Growing a business is hard. Sustaining a business is even harder. It's a risk. We put up our own money. We used our house as collateral. We high-five when we make payroll. But in the end, it's worth it. Thank you again to City Council, Councilman Coghill, for recognizing S.B. Thomas, your homegrown Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Small Business of 2025.
So to our folks for the Pollinator Day, want to come forward? Whereas, green spaces like pollinator gardens can improve mental health by reducing stress, providing peaceful environments, and giving people a chance to connect with nature. And whereas, pollinators like bees, butterflies, and birds are vital for growing the food we eat and keeping our environment healthy. And whereas, many pollinator species like monarch butterflies and bumblebees are endangered and creating habitats like pollinator gardens is crucial to ensuring their survival. And whereas, in the past, bee populations decreased at a rate of 15%, but since 2006, it has increased to an alarming 30% every year. And bees are responsible for pollinating one-third of the world's food supply. And whereas, pollinators are responsible for over 75% of the world's flowering plants. And whereas, while pollinator gardens are essential to maintaining a healthy environment and ecosystem, they are also needed to provide cleaner cities and communities. And whereas, pollinator gardens in Pittsburgh help reduce urban heat, filter pollutants from the air, and provide natural cooling, which are critical benefits in combating the effects of climate change in cities. And whereas, pollinator gardens help protect wildlife by giving them access to safe spaces and natural resources. And whereas, climate change is a social issue and equity issue, disproportionately affecting people of color and people in poverty, thereby exacerbating existing inequities and limiting equality of opportunity, which is a foundational aspiration for modern America. And whereas, pollinator gardens can create more beautiful environments and help people feel better about where they live. And whereas, the Humane Action Pittsburgh Youth Steering Committee and the city of Pittsburgh recognize that protecting pollinators is not only about preserving biodiversity, but also about fostering a culture of care, leadership, and responsibility among young people whose actions today will shape the health and future of our planet for generations to come. Now, therefore be it resolved that the city of Pittsburgh hereby declares May 31 as Pittsburgh Pollinator Day and encourages all residents to celebrate and promote the importance of pollinators, the creation of pollinator gardens, and the protection of their habitats for the betterment of our community and the environment.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you all so much. I'm not going to take time to talk. We actually have two youth speakers who would love to tell you a little bit more about this process, about the Youth Steering Committee, and also invite you all to come out, May 17 and May 31, to join us for the garden install and the ribbon cutting. Thank you all so much, and we'll invite Miles.
Hello, everybody. My name is Miles Owens. I'm with Humane Action Pittsburgh Youth Steering Committee. Thank you so much for recognizing us, City Council. I first wanted to start off by saying why this is so important. And it's not just because of the pollinators, it's because it shows that a youth-led project can succeed in this city. And, you know, all our life as youth, it's common to hear, oh, you're too young, you can't make a change. But I think this proves that that's just not true anymore. And it's awesome to be able to do something like this and be recognized. So, thank you. I also want to talk about my personal experience with the Youth Steering Committee. Something that I remember pretty distinctly is, we brought in Dwayne Walker, the mayor of Alec Wippa, and he just taught us how to be excellent leaders and be pillars in our community. And that stuff gets stuck with me, and that's just a skill that I gained from the Youth Steering Committee that I wouldn't have gained elsewhere. But, yeah, I think I'm going to let Ella speak a bit. But thank you guys so much for recognizing us. It's a pleasure. We're proud of what we've done.
I would just like to thank everybody again for coming here today, and also invite you once more to come join us for the ribbon cutting on May 31. This is just a really big opportunity for us, like as students. It's insane to see, like, people here gathered and families coming for support, and also that we actually made something physical that you can look at. You know, pollination, as was mentioned in the whereas statements, isn't just about, like, the flowers and the bees and stuff. It's really just about the community and the whole of society. And so, it's really awesome to see change being made. And it informs us that, like, things can change, and you can do something about the environment that you were born into and where you are as a person. Thank you.
And we have one to be read into the record from Councilman Mosley.
Councilman Mosley presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 3, 2025, to be Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy's Spring Hat Luncheon Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proclamation has been approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which may be forced by the council. Profanity will not be permitted. Once you are called, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Homewood, Timbuktu, Mali, also. APS, ACS, and ASM member. The Q5 Info Intel Frame is copyright RLM. Global Intelligence Society candidate for president include sister city allies, and I think we need one from Africa, and the spectrum. This is consistent with RLM Initiative Six, City, Ally, Country Alliance, and my focus on the spectrum, the rainbow. This PC is on blue. I think we need to calm down, cool off, or red-hot and causing a lot of trouble as a consequence. Quantum level one, blue. This is pre-disciplinary information and intelligence. Three dimensions, X, Y, and Z. X, blue light wavelength, ten to the minus two, ten to the minus one micrometers. Y, the blue dye, cobalt chlorine. And Z, blue cyanobacteria quintessence, level two. Blue disciplinary information and intelligence, X, Y, Z, dimensions. X, visual info intel, blue LED, which you are using in the room at this moment. Virtual artificial DII, the blue robot from Nvidia. Political DII, blue. Is this a blue city? Is everybody happy? Quora, level three, blue supra-discipline information intelligence regionals. What does Pittsburgh have to trade across Africa, Asia, South America, and Europe? Blue water purified at less than 1% of nanoplastics. And blue robot version for trade. Africa, Lagos, Nigeria needs sugi rua. Asia, Tokyo, Nihon is a port city with three rivers, like the city of Pittsburgh, and it needs cleaner nano-cleansed AI Mizzou. It negotiates, it can negotiate with Pittsburgh-based AI robot for sediment reduction and soil de-liquefaction programs. South America, Ciudad de Mexico, Mexico, the port city needs agua azua. And Europe, Frankfurt, also needs these as well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Ren. Is Edward Ren with us? If not, our next speaker is John Rhodes.
Hi, my name is John Rhodes, and I live in Polish Hill. I serve as a board member of Affordable Housing Nonprofit City of Bridges Community Land Trust, and I'm a member of- Trust, and I'm a member of the Housing Justice Table. I'm in support of reforming minimum lot size. I'm in support of it because I want our city and my neighborhood to be a more affordable, inclusive, and transit-friendly place, but right now Pittsburgh is facing a crisis on all those fronts, and my neighborhood of Polish Hill is experiencing that firsthand. According to the U.S. Census, from 2019 to 2022, median rent in Polish Hill increased by nearly 50%. From 2012 to 2022, the median sale price quadrupled. Meanwhile, the housing supply has plummeted. In those same 11 years, the neighborhood lost over 10% of its housing units, with rental units decreasing at twice the rate as owner-occupied homes. Thus, with rising housing costs and fewer homes, there is rampant displacement. Our population decreased by 11%, and black residents were the most affected with a decrease of 48%. The evidence is clear. Under the current zoning, Polish Hill has become the smallest, most expensive, least diverse place it has ever been. I am in favor of removing barriers to building more housing because, as all the evidence shows, the more homes there are, the lower housing costs get. And according to Pittsburgh's own Housing Needs Assessment of 2022, vacancy across multifamily developments is at less than 5%, the lowest rate in the city since 1980. In the first quarter of 2025, according to RealPage Market Analytics, Pittsburgh had the third-largest annual effective rate change in rent. We need more homes, and we need more apartments for medium and low-income families the most. About half the land in Polish Hill sits on residential base zoning districts that would benefit from this bill by allowing the neighborhood to return to the denser, more affordable place that it used to be. Because statistics can be impersonal and abstract, I thought it would also be helpful to give real-world examples demonstrating how dire the issue is in my neighborhood. At 316 Harmer Street, there used to be a six-unit apartment building which accepted housing choice vouchers. At 3209 Dobson, there used to be two buildings that housed a total of seven apartments and a storefront. That's all been replaced by just four townhouses, each with built-in garage. Even more to the point are examples like 3128 Dobson and 3205 Brereton. At each address, there used to stand a two-unit apartment building. What's taken their places? Concrete parking pads. Where the neighborhood used to have 17 apartments and a storefront, will now have less than a quarter of the housing we used to, replacing it with concrete slabs and million-dollar townhomes. And these are just a few examples of many throughout Polish Hill. My neighborhood is on the fast track to becoming exorbitantly expensive and entirely car-dependent. Please support minimum lot size reform, which in one small way can help. However, just as you can't build a house with only a hammer, in order to create real change for affordability, inclusivity, and a transit-friendly city, this bill must be accompanied by many other reforms, such as responsible funding programs, expanded inclusionary zoning, and additional density proposals such as equitable transit-oriented development. We need champions on council who are willing to stand up at community meetings and here at council to make the case for these changes, or we'll just be a neighborhood and a city that slowly but surely displaces our most vulnerable neighbors.
And our last registered speaker is Morgan Shaw.
Good morning. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Morgan Shaw. I live in Shadyside at 260 Shady Avenue. I'm in Councilwoman Strasburger's district. I am speaking here today in favor of Councilman Bobby Wilson's bill, forgive me, I always forget the number, 1579, to reduce minimum lot sizes throughout the City of Pittsburgh in the districts that are included in the bill. I spoke a few weeks ago at the hearing. Several of you were there, and I don't know if you remember, but I said at that time I was hoping that this would come up soon enough because I'm moving in a couple weeks, and I don't know if you did it because of me, probably not, but either way, I want to say I'm very thankful that this bill has come before council so quickly. This issue is not something that the City of Pittsburgh should wait on. Every day that we wait, every month that we wait, housing gets more expensive and more of our neighbors get displaced. Not everyone has the choice of when they want to move, and a lot of the reason for that is because housing has gotten too expensive for them, and they're forced to move. So, what we've been unable to do to match the demand for the amount of people that want to live in Pittsburgh because of its, because of all the jobs it has, the access to transit, the access to walkable amenities, shops, schools, all of those things, we basically prevented ourselves from building enough housing to meet that demand, and now people are getting forced out. I really care about this bill, the minimum lot size bill, because it is a direct result of segregation. It was designed explicitly to segregate neighborhoods based on income and therefore segregate them based on race. So, please, I urge you to pass this bill, and again, I really want to thank Councilman Bobby Wilson and Councilwoman Bob Warwick and Councilman Bob Charlin for getting this bill through. I, you know, if you can get parking requirements done in the next week, that'd be great to you, but I don't think that's going to happen, but I hope that that comes up next. And anyways, I'm very proud to be leaving the city in a better place and with more liberalized zoning. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. That exhausts a list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes to speak.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up in the Hill District. First, I want to show that I have a money order for $120 for WESA, the radio station FM, that they said that Trump is trying to alleviate us having any possibility of learning what's happening in our community and possibly even stopping it. So, I don't want to talk about Trump, not today, but I want to say this, that I was walking down East Ohio Street yesterday, and I came to, like, 18th Street, I remember crossing the street, and as I'm looking down, I see pennies. Well, I have a thing about pennies. I pick them up. It depends on what's around, but anyway, I went to pick up pennies, and I looked pennies, and then up in the doorway is change. There's a whole handful of change, cupful, in fact, I forgot the cup, it's here. So, I picked it up, and so that means that that's a homeless person. And the reason why I say that is that I want to apologize to all the homeless people. There's a young man that caught me walking home from City Council, and he's saying, "Miss Yvonne, Miss Yvonne." And I'm saying, "Baby, how did I know you?" He said, "Oh, you give me money sometime." He's homeless. But he started telling me that on the south side, there's an Asian cop that is beating up the homeless people. He said they were in the doorway. He came, he beat them, he took their computer, he took their laptop. I am upset, and I'm sorry that I hadn't told Jins before because I promised him. I asked him to come. They don't want to come in front of you because I tell them, "Come," so they can see that you're actually a human being that need help. I am really upset, and I'm worried about the man. I have the cup, it's a silver cup. I showed the sergeant of arms, because he was saying he has a cup like that. It's full of change. I got all this money. If he comes here to City Council, I will give him cash money. I'll give him at least $5, about that much. I wish I could show you all of it now. I have it back there, but my time will run out. I want you, City Council, especially Cardill, you was talking to the police, I told him, especially him, tell him to watch this today. Watch what I'm saying, that this man has told me that this cop been beating them up for a long time over there on the south side. The south side, he's Asian. Understand this, I am sorry that I didn't tell you this earlier, and I feel very, very sorry for that man. Whoever the homeless person was, his cup and his money, he wouldn't have left it. He wouldn't have left it if he hadn't been forced to.
Thank you.
Please help the homeless.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Bernadette from Beachview. There's so much stuff I need to bring up to your attention. When I brought the landslide that turned out to be mine subsidence at the Fallowfield Bridge, and they did that big repair on that section of Fallowfield, I had told the guys working there that I had done a title search. I had a ghost in my apartment on Fallowfield, so I did a title search, all the way back to the beginning, and it was a coal, there was a coal company, and then a farm, or vice versa, with all the, explains all the grapevines, but anyway. On that same hillside that I know was a coal company, at the corner of Hampshire and Methol, we've got something going on. There is a hole next to the sewer, like, the thing where the clown lives down, and a hole big enough for two of me to fall into. There's a fence behind, around that property, but there's also children that live in that building, and there's a dog. It's right across from the brand-new remodeled church, the, that, I don't know who to contact for this. And now that the spring is here, all the filled potholes are like muffins that just went pop, 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 boasted. It's a hot mess all along. It's getting to the point where I can't get, and I can't use the sidewalk, and I can't use the street unless I ride down the middle of the trolley tracks, and just imagine the yellings that I get from people on that one. I was in line at Las Palmas. As some of you know, I have been working diligently to get the new Beachview Athletic Association, which is not, it's partially happening, somewhat happening, but the new commissioner is coaching over in Brookline because there, he doesn't know the ins and outs. I brought the people, but we need people to help him. But I'm standing in line at Las Palmas, and I see this really cute little uniform, and the first name behind it, Squirrel Hill Baseball, great, I go to Squirrel Hill every day, Walnut Capital. Okay, we need help, and we shouldn't have to reach out to Walnut Capital. This kid needs help. He needs guidance. Somebody in the city, I know you're all listening, I know you pipe this stuff in, somebody in the city needs to reach out to the new Beachview Athletic Association. Anthony knows who they are. He's been trying to help, but I know he's busy with elections.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Charlin, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Councilperson Charlin presents Bill Number 1797. Resolution Amending Resolution Number 18 of 2025, effective February 3rd, 2025, which authorized the mayor and the director of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement with UPMC Benefits Management Services, Inc., doing business as Work Partners for services relating to providing third-party administrative services of the City of Pittsburgh's workers' compensation program for costs not to exceed $5,2,764 over the course of four years by correctly restating the amounts to be incurred annually with no change to the total amount.
Thank you. Councilman Cardill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1798. Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Liberty Avenue HSIP Project, where Pittsburgh Water will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements. Bill 1799. Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Phase One Project, where Pittsburgh Water will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements. And Bill Number 1800. Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with the Pittsburgh Water for Costs Associated with the Penn Avenue Phase Two Project, where Pittsburgh Water will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreements.
And Councilwoman Kell Smith, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 1801. Resolution Providing for the Ratification and Extension by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency for 30 days, thereby making the declaration effective until May 30 of 2025, in response to the severe thunderstorm of April 29, 2025 in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill 1802. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Lawi Ong in the Amount of $8,971.17 over one year, in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his vehicle from an accident with the city police vehicle on July 29, 2024. And Bill Number 1803. Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Harry Howell, Care of Stefania Jeffrey, Three Management, in an Amount not to Exceed $3,493 over one year, in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to rental property at the corner of Casacusco Way and Letico Street by a City of Pittsburgh Environmental Services vehicle on August 24, 2024.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, a motion to waive Rule 8 on Bill 1801 so that we can discuss it tomorrow's Standing Committee?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 1801 will be on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 1804. Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements and permanent right-of-way acquisitions on certain properties in the second and sixth ward in the city in order to advance the Liberty Avenue Highway Safety Improvement Program. Costs for these temporary construction easements and right-of-way acquisitions shall not exceed $689,970, reimbursable at 90% for the first $90,000, and reimbursable at 80% for the remaining Bill Number 1805. Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement or Agreements with Duquesne Light Company for Costs Associated with the Smithfield Street Phase One Project, where Duquesne Light Company will be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work to be described in the agreement. Bill 1806. Resolution Authorizing Acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the Dedication of Portions of Auburn Street, Kalida Drive, and Princeton Place at no cost to the city, located in the Larmor East Liberty Phase One Plan of Lots, as recorded in the Allegheny County Department of Real Estate in Plan Book Volume 283, Page 22, 12th Ward, 9th Council District. Bill 1807. Resolution renaming the Boundary Street Park located in Central Oakland as the Oakland DIY Skate Park.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. I have six items. We could begin with the two appointments.
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number 1808. Resolution Appointing Megan Leach as a Member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a Term to Expire, May 1, 2030. And Bill Number 1809. Resolution Appointing Jordan Fishback as a Member of the Pittsburgh Water Board of Directors with a Term to Expire, May 1, 2030.
And we need a motion to approve or to interview.
Motion to interview? And can I also ask that we, every time these appointments come forward, that we have the financial interest statements ahead of time? Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we have four communications.
Bill 1810. Communication from Jake Polack, Director of Office of Management and Budget, submitting to City Council the attached status update from the Grants Office for the week ended May 2, 2025. Bill 1811. Communication from Jake Polack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay requests on behalf of the mayor's office for Paul Scott and Sidney Cooper. Bill Number 1812. Communication from Jake Polack, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Mobility Enhancement District Report for the period ending December 31, 2024. And Bill Number 1813. Communication from Rachel Heisler, City- Communication From Rachel Heisler, City Controller, Submitting The Annual Comprehensive Financial Report For The Year Ended December Thirty-First, Two Thousand And Twenty-Four.
We need a motion to read, receive, and file.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bills have been read, received, and filed, and will be filed. Our next order of business is reports of committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law. Councilwoman Smith?
Councilperson Strausberger presents Bill Number Seventeen Ninety-Three, Reported A Committee On Finance And Law For April Thirty, Two Thousand And Twenty-Five With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Sixteen Seventy-Five, Resolution Providing For The Sell Of Certain Property, Twenty-Third Ward, First Council District Of The City, Acquired By The City Of Pittsburgh At Tax Sell. Bill Seventeen Forty-Eight, Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Warrant In Favor Of The New Pittsburgh Courier Doing Business As Real Times, Inc. For Legal Advertisements Published On February Fifth, Two Thousand And Twenty-Five In Connection With The City Of Pittsburgh Quiet Title Actions For An Amount Not To Exceed Six Thousand One Hundred Fifty-eight Dollars And Thirty Cent. Bill Seventeen Forty-Nine, Resolution Authorizing Eleven Open-In Professional Services Agreements With Five Vendors To Provide Professional Services On An On-Call Basis As Required Related To Special Event Services As Needed By The Various Departments Of The City Of Pittsburgh, Each Agreement Being At An Amount Not To Exceed Seven Hundred Fifty Thousand Dollars Annually For A Three-Year Term And Providing For The Funding Of The Costs Thereof. And Bill Number Seventeen Seventy-Two, Resolution Amending And Supplementing The Rules Of Council To Provide For Contingent Presiding Officers Over Regular Meetings Of Council In The Event Of Absences.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And now Councilwoman, Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Seventeen Ninety-Four, Reported A Committee On Public Works And Infrastructure For April Thirty of Two Thousand And Twenty-Five With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Seventeen Fifty, Resolution Authorizing The Directors Of The Departments Of Finance And Mobility And Infrastructure To Take Actions Necessary For Recordation Of Temporary Construction Easements Over Certain City-Owned Porcelums In Order To Advance A Project For Rehabilitation, Reconstruction, And Repair Of The Smithfield Street In The City Of Pittsburgh At No Cost To The City. And Bill Seventeen Fifty-One, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of Public Works And/or The Director Of The Department Of Finance To Enter Into An Agreement, Agreements, And/or Amendments With Riverlife For The Purpose Of Allowing Access To The Riverlife Barge From The Allegheny Landing Dock At No Cost To The City.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And that takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Seventeen Ninety-Five, Reported A Committee On Land Use And Economic Development For April Thirty of Two Thousand And Twenty-Five With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Fifteen Seventy-Nine, Ordinance Amending And Supplementing The Pittsburgh Code Of Ordinances, Title Nine, Zoning, Article Two, Base Zoning Districts, Chapter Nine Oh Three, Residential Zoning Districts To Reduce Required Minimum Lot Sizes. And Bill Seventeen Fifty-Three, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of City Planning To Enter Into An Agreement, Agreements, And/or Amendments With The Museum Of Contemporary Art For The Purpose Of Loaning The City-Owned Stephen Foster Statue To Mocha At No Cost To The City.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. President, I forgot to, like, raise my hand to make a comment. Can I do that now? I appreciate, I appreciate it. Um, so I just want to make sure that, you know, we are, just to remind the public, that we just read Fifteen Seventy-Nine, which is the bill on minimum lot size, which we heard public comment about a short while ago. And I am glad that my councilmembers heard testimony from one of the neighborhoods I represent, Polish Hill, because it was a really good illustration of the way change happens. It isn't always a, um, you know, a large building of affordable apartments That Comes Down Like In Penn Plaza, Which We All Saw Happen And We All Experienced In The Media, And It Was Very Visible. Um, and, but sometimes change happens, um, in less dramatic and less visible ways, but it still happens, right? And so the, the counts of affordable apartments that we heard that have been lost, some to parking spaces, um, some to single-family homes, um, is magnified tenfold, a hundredfold across the city and across the years. Um, and so it's really important that council not only has been discussing, again with the leadership of our current president, Daniel Lavell, how to create affordability, um, and not just affordable housing, I'll say, but I think we, we should call it affordability, um, and for the last ten years. But it's clear that we haven't done everything or thought of everything we can do. And so we continue to discuss new ideas, discuss deepening some policies we've already put in place. Um, and for that reason, I thought that this bill specifically, I'm going to put my magnifiers back on, Fifteen Seventy-Nine, should have stayed in Standing Committee last week, and which is why I voted no, and as, which I said on the record last week. And Madam Clerk, could you bring my comments from last week forward to the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, that this bill, um, in isolation, will not have the impact that it would have had as part of the larger package. Um, I have no, as again, I'm fully supportive of the words on the page, of the, of the language of the bill, and again, a shout out to Councilwoman Warwick and her staff um, for putting together, um, the, the legislative text here. Uh, and pushing forward the poli, the policies as part of the larger affordability package. Um, but I encourage council to take up all of the other reforms, um, including expanding, expanding inclusionary zoning, including parking reforms, including, um, even accessory dwelling units, so that we can talk about how to increase affordability coherently. Um, so again, while I'm supportive of this language, and, um, I, I thought it should have stayed in Standing Committee, which is why my provisional vote was no. I will vote yes today. Um, but we'll, I think we, we, those of us who are, are uh, less comfortable, who either abstained or voted no last week, um, will all be encouraging our colleagues, um, to engage um, in the conversation of how to increase affordability across all Pittsburgh neighborhoods. So with that, I'll vote yes on the bills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I was, wanted to refer to Bill Seventeen Fifty-Three. I can't remember, did we, I, I know we started to vote on it, but I don't know if we actually went through with the...
We, we've read it. We haven't...
Okay, we haven't voted on it yet? Okay.
Well, you voted yes.
I voted on it. Okay, okay. Well, I guess I wanted to see if there was any communication last week, uh, in Standing Committee. I asked about the appraisal, appraisal of it. It was, uh, I want to say six hundred bucks or so. And, uh, I didn't know if we received that communication. I haven't had time to look at that, but from, I think it was Kevin at the table?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nothing, nothing aware of. So, so as it stands today, we're probably responsible for the
Yes.
six hundred bucks. Okay. Can I, uh, switch my vote to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're a aye on all bills and no on Seventeen Fifty-Three?
I am a no on Seventeen Fifty-Three, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless we had, yeah.
I don't, I'm not aware of any communication.
If we didn't get communication, then I'm to assume we paying for it. Thanks.
Thank you. I believe we're, with Councilman Gross. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll continue with Councilman Mosley.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick?
My Marge Simpson grumble for Fifteen Seventy-Nine, because I wanted it with the inclusionary zoning, but aye.
Mr. Wilson?
This is a little unorthodox here. Can I make a comment?
Comment.
Promise I'll be brief. Yeah, I just wanted to, since other members, um, sort of discussed a little bit of the bill, I just wanted to recognize that, you know, this, this bill, it was part of a package, came over to us. And, uh, there's a lot going on with that. So much so that, um, you know, I, I believe the, the, the tone of the discussion In Terms Of, uh, that we would just make developers do affordable, uh, do inclusionary zoning Without, uh, it being funded is, is, uh, you know, my, my hunch in this whole thing is that that is not the case. And the public, it, it is being misled to think that this is a campaign To Hold, um, developers accountable And Force Them To Do Something That They Don't Want To Do. Developers just want to build, and, uh, you know, this is a scenario where We have, uh, we have, what's going on? Can we have some order? Can't even, no?
You currently have the floor, Councilman.
Okay. Uh, so I'll try to wrap this up. So there was a twelve-hour meeting at City Planning, and, uh, you know, there was no mention of, of, uh, how this is actually going to take place. It was just a, a, you know, a way to tell the public That We're Going To Force Developers Do This, and, you know, that's how strong we are. And I'm curious to know how that plays out. I think that that's not actually what's going to happen, and I think the public needs to know that, because if the public's going to end up paying for affordable housing, which we do currently on a lot of different levels, I think that could be a good thing. But the public, you know, should know that, and we should be able to have that discussion, especially in a time of decreasing revenues. Uh, and also something that was quite alarming to me Was The Amount Of Wage Tax That Is Being Decreased This Year, Which Means That Jobs Are Actually Going, People Are Working Outside The City. That Could Be The Trend Moving Forward. So we need to continually monitor this situation, but this bill, uh, provides, you know, this bill decreases the cost of housing Without Costing The City Anything. And If This Bill Truly Was Going To Be A Part Of This Package To Offer Twenty Units Or More, Like To Be A Part Of This Twenty Unit Or More Scenario For Inclusionary Zoning, Then Maybe That Should Have Just Been The Part Of The Bill That, um, maybe that should have just been A Part Of The, The Zoning, uh, Code That Was Changed. Because This Bill Does So Much More For The Lots That Are Between Housing That, You Know, Either We Tore Down Or, Um, You Know, You Know, The City Tore Down Twenty Years Ago And It's Just Still Vacant, Or There's Just Remaining Vacant Lots, Um, That Could Have Single Family Homes, Duplexes, Triplexes, Quadplexes. And That All Doesn't Have Anything To Do With The Proposed Inclusionary Zoning. So This Is A Moment Where, You Know, We Can Look Like We're Getting Something Done Uh, For Pittsburgh Without Costing The Taxpayers Anything To Make Uniform, To Make Neighborhoods Look Uniform. And, you know, quite frankly, this is, this is a bill That Makes Us Look Like We're Just Not Bureaucrats That Can't Get Anything Done. So, appreciated everyone who wrote the bill. Um, appreciate Councilperson Warwick and everything you did, uh, you know, to get this to the, to City Planning. And, um, appreciative everyone, everyone that's been supportive of the process since then. So, looking forward to, uh, voting aye, which I will vote now, aye. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye for the, all the reasons Councilman Gross stated.
On Bill Fifteen Seventy-Nine, eight ayes, zero noes. On Bill Seventeen Fifty-Three, seven ayes, one no.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, Councilman Coghill Mosley presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Seventeen Ninety-Six, Reported A Committee On Intergovernmental And Educational Affairs For April Thirty Of Two Thousand And Twenty-Five With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Seventeen Forty-Seven, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For Seventy-Four Fifteen Hermite's Street At No Cost To The City.
You've heard the reading and title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lavell, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received a legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That Takes Us To Motion And Resolutions. Now Begin With Councilman Warwick.
Um, yes, thank you. I would like to call for a post-agenda On Duquesne Light Company's Response To The Recent Severe Weather Event. You know, I still have people in my district without power. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure about others, but, you know, I have folks who have now been eight days, uh, without power. And, um, while I am extremely appreciative Of Emily And Luis At Duquesne Light, Of All The Workers Who Have Come Out, You Know, Working On The, On The Light Boxes, You Know, Everybody On The Ground In The Middle Of The Emergency, A, As Well As Our City Workers, Our E M S, Our D P W, Right? Everybody Kind Of On The Ground Together, Working Through The Emergency As It Is Currently Ongoing. Um, you know, I think everyone is doing a great job in, in, in terms of that. However, the overall issue of Duquesne Light Company Being apparently completely unable to respond in a timely manner To, You Know, A, A Ten-Minute Weather Event, Granted That Was Severe. Um, but, you know, leaving folks without power for eight days in Two Thousand And Twenty-Five Is Simply Unacceptable. Um, people are very upset. I, I sympathize with them. Um, and, uh, I think that it, you know, I think that folks in Pittsburgh certainly should be looking long, you know, looking very closely at what it means to have privatized utilities That More Or Less We Have No Control Over. But At Any Rate, so that's why I do want to call this, but, but I, but I don't want this post-agenda To Just Be, You Know, Us Sort Of Piling Onto Duquesne Light. So I, I'm, my, my hope is that we... you know, us sort of piling onto Duquesne Light. So I, I'm, my, my hope is that we can have at the table, Duquesne Light representatives from the PUC and also representatives from our various, from our state and federal offices so that we can also talk about what it would take for this to, you know, to ensure that something like this does not happen again. And that is obviously gonna be a state, federal, and also, you know, Duquesne Light, PUC. That is gonna be a collaboration to be sure. So I would like to get everyone to the table to have a kind of post-mortem, so to speak, about this, this severe weather event. Thank you.
May I get a second and then we'll go into discussion? Thank you. So we've got Councilwoman Smith, Councilman Coghill, then Councilman Wilson, then then Councilman Mosley.
I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick for calling for the, um, post-agenda. And I do know that the state reps are also calling for some things because they're experiencing so much. And I actually got calls from Forest Hills yesterday, which I never do, but, um, they're just, everybody across the county is just so frustrated. But I do think it has to be beyond just Duquesne Light. Duquesne Light is an issue for sure. And I, I'd, I'd like to know how many people they have on, that they had to call in four hundred people to help us. I think that that's, that's significant and, um, and I think that's leading to all the other issues. But I also think that we need to know what the plan is. And so I hope that we include public safety in this and, and others because, um, you know, OCHS, everybody should be involved in this. I've got, I received calls from seniors and high-rises in Brookline, which I just now represent, which I didn't even realize I, I, it just happened in January that they got this portion of Brookline. And, um, thanks to Councilman Charland's office for sending the call my way. But I do want to thank the Public Safety Director for addressing the issues there. They weren't getting no food. They had no electricity, you know, no what. There was all kinds of things that they were out of. And just the seniors were just totally terrified, uh, not knowing what was going on for so long. They felt so forgotten. So I want to thank the Public Safety Director for that. But I do think that back years ago when Snowmageddon occurred, then Luke Ravenstall, twenty-seven-year-old mayor, went away for his birthday and got slammed, um, by a lot of people. As you recall, Councilman or Council President, um, that he got slammed for not having a plan in place. And back then, Councilwoman Rudyak took a lot of time to make sure that, after slamming them, that we put a plan in place. So I hope that the result of this is that we have a plan in place because when nine-one-one goes down, what is the backup plan for the county? And that's what happened initially, which started getting calls backlog. And then three-one-one would have been an alternative if we had three-one-one here. But we have three-one-one now works from home, so we had people working from home that possibly didn't have power. And that was a challenge. And I do think that that's okay to let people work from home, but we should have an alternative to be able to come in so that we can man and, and volunteer for three-one-one ourselves. I did that during Snowmageddon. I try never to criticize during the crisis. I try to help through as much as I can and then make sure that we're doing whatever we can do, um, on our level. But I do think that there's also a lot of concern for me, um, when the food bank also lost their power, there was issues of how they were gonna get food out to the public. So to me, immediately, we should have been able to tap into, instead of having to raise funds, we should be able to tap into the Food Justice Fund. And I, I just, I think there's three million dollars there. So there's a lot of concerns for me with the partnership with Allegheny County and what happens when nine-one-one, you know, unfortunately went down, um, what's, you know, what's our backup plan if that happens again? What's our backup plan for food and getting food out to the people if the food bank goes down? And what, um, the PUC is doing in terms of the utilities? Because I think that that's a conversation that we have to have about all of our utilities, not just Duquesne Light. But, um, I do want to thank the linemen and the crews that went out. I do want to thank the DPW crews. We've had many issues where they also were putting themselves in jeopardy and in danger. So I do want to thank the people who responded. I do want to thank, um, our crews, our workers, uh, for all that they've done. I, I, I do want to thank the Public Safety Director for responding to a lot of calls, I imagine, from all of us. But I do want to know what our plan is going forward. So I hope that this, from this post-agenda, we draft a plan for any emergency, not just this type of emergency. Because this was a storm. This wasn't even a hurricane. This was a storm. So if we're this broken after a week and a half of a storm, what are we gonna do if this is something more significant like a Snowmageddon? So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, yeah, I want to echo Councilwoman Kell Smith's comments. First and foremost, I mean, I am also happy we're having a post-agenda on this. But I do want to say that, um, this was unlike any storm we've seen. Many of us who are old enough probably remember the tornadoes that ripped through Mount Washington. Oh, gosh, that would have been twenty, twenty-five years ago or so. And, but that was more confined to-
I'm a little older than twenty-five.
Yeah. That was, that was confined to three or four neighborhoods. This was catastrophic. And I, I really want to give a shout out to Emily, who used to work on this floor. I think she worked for Councilwoman Strasburger. I can't remember, but she took every one of my calls. I couldn't believe it. I could just feel the frustration and, you know, almost, you know, I could, I could, I could, I sympathized with her that day, let me tell you. But she took every phone call for me, managed to get things done. I mean, I couldn't believe the devastation. There were areas, and one thing I want to go over in the post-agenda is, I was worried, there were so many areas I had cut off where you just couldn't get in or out with a vehicle. So I was worried, like, somebody had a cardiac arrest, what is our plan? Do we have a plan? I called Director Schmidt and he assured me that, yes, we, you know, we have the, we have the know-how. We would get the job done if we had to get in and take somebody out. But, uh, but I worry about that on a more, uh, uh, bigger scale as it was. And I will say, you know, this, just this morning, I got calls, people still with their power out. There's linesmen from Alabama there. Uh, so this was just like any other natural disaster in the United States, pretty much. We had to call and Duquesne Light, I don't know if they were under-resourced or not. I can't, I'm not in a position to say that. But I do know they called in people from Erie and Cleveland and Alabama and everywhere to come in and try to get these, our electric back on and the power lines, uh, you know, off the grounds, which were very dangerous. So, so I just really, um, look forward to post-agenda, but I, I really, truly wanted to say thank you to Emily, um, Representative for Duquesne Light now. She did a fantastic job. So, that's it. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, that there is, um, there's been a, there's been a, you know, obviously a good response, um, just in general. I mean, you see people out there working every day, power's being turned back on. So I'm looking forward to, you know, post-agenda is to really get a sense of, you know, what's, what an, what happens, um, you know, in a scenario like this because, you know, we're not in the aside of managing the city and, and it's, um, and the, you know, all, everything, all the workers that are being allocated to, you know, cut down trees and, you know, all that. Um, so I'm definitely interested in that and how Duquesne Light, you know, how they prioritize different neighborhoods. Because I know that I had a neighborhood recently that, uh, did question, um, where they were in the priority list. And, and luckily that, um, you know, luckily they, like, that scenario was resolved and they were actually get their power on two days sooner. They just got the power back on Sunday. So, um, but they were scheduled for Tuesday, to at least get it on by Tuesday. So hopefully, you know, people that are still dealing with that, hopefully they are ahead of schedule on, on what they're predicting out there. So wish the best, everyone, and I want to thank Duquesne Light for all the efforts that they've, um, done so far. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo all my colleagues' comments, um, about the extreme weather event. We experienced, like my comments, you know, last week, I think, you know, we should be, uh, you know, very intentional and deliberate, you know, how we talk about, um, these extreme weather events, um, you know, clearly, you know, Duquesne Light had never experienced, um, you know, over a quarter million people, you know, um, o- out of power, uh, you know, simultaneously, you know, throughout their network. I think it, at one point, it was up to like three hundred and fifty thousand people, um, you know, without power, which, you know, um, you know, really emphasizes, you know, why we need to have a post-agenda and why we need to be looking at having plans, um, to respond, um, you know, to these weather events. And maybe, you know, a potential silver lining could be being that Duquesne Light never experienced or any of us ever experienced, you know, this kind of weather event. Maybe this can be instructive, you know, to have a plan. Because I don't know if you can put a plan together for something you've never experienced before. Um, so possibly this can provide us, uh, you know, with, um, some instruction on, on how to respond uh, to these kind of weather events, which I believe will only increase, you know, as the impact of climate change um, increases i- in this region. And we have, uh, you know, more, uh, wet weather events, uh, he- here in this region than we experienced, um, in, in the past. I know they said it was the third, um, um, highest velocity winds that they've ever recorded at Pittsburgh Airport, you know, so this was definitely, uh, one of the most extreme weather events, you know, we've experienced. Uh, you know, so it, it really, to me, you know, emphasizes the importance of understanding the new reality and the new normal of when it comes to weather in, in this region. And we will begin to experience more of these weather events and understanding that the trees that have grown in this part of the country for hundreds of years cannot withstand eighty mile-per-hour winds like the palm trees in Florida. Uh, so it puts us, um, at, at a great disadvantage, um, you know, as these weather events in- in- increase. So I, I look forward to that conversation, look forward to continuing to work with my colleagues and anyone else who's interested in figuring out how we can make our city more resilient moving forward a- as these weather events, um, increase. But I do want to thank the folks from Department of Public Works, Forestry, Duquesne Light, Public Safety. You know, I was out on, um, Joshua Street in Lincoln-Lemington late Friday night with Duquesne Light, Fire and Police, um, addressing a live wire. Um, and I know there was live wires, you know, all over the county that had to be addressed first. Um, and, um, I know there's folks I'm still checking in with this morning to see if they have power. And, you know, for the record, I don't have power yet. So hopefully, you know, Duquesne Light gets the power back on at my house. But I've been focused on getting everybody else's power on. Um, and, uh, hopefully, uh, my wife will let me in the house because I've been so focused on getting everybody else's power back on or helping, working with Duquesne Light that, you know, my power's been on the back end. But being that today is the deadline, let's hope that Duquesne Light meets the deadline and gets the power back on in North Point Breeze as well. But I thank everyone for their comments and look forward to working with folks, you know, on this very important issue moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Gross?
Thank you. I also want to thank Councilwoman Warwick for motioning for the post-agenda. And I appreciated, um, Councilwoman Smith's comments about the lack of backup power at some critical services like the food bank, like nine-one-one. And I, I would ask the post-agenda sponsor if, um, there's some way to integrate summary evaluation of the communication systems that we have that maybe did not used to be dependent on electrical power, specifically digital communications, right? It used to be wired landlines, right? So if those of us who are old enough to remember, a lot of times when your power was out, your telephone still worked. Um, and now digital communications, especially voice-over protocols that we have now, if you're, you know, your cell phone might still have a charge, but if your computer is down and that is what is running your communications, um, and then you don't have communications. So, um, just want to, extra element, that if we're creating resilience plans and emergency response plans is something that I don't know enough about and I'd be eager to learn more about. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before going to, no? Okay. Uh, so Councilwoman Warwick, if you're okay, because you did acknowledge that we're still in this emergency, I would just hope that we could work to maybe schedule this out for like four or five weeks.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because, and, and it's gonna take some time, I think, to figure out who, who all needs to be at the table and all of that. So, yeah, no, no, this is, yeah.
Good. Thank you. Um, and to Councilman Mosley's point about ever increasing climate change in our region, I think it'd probably be helpful. I'm not sure whether they would contribute to this immediate conversation, but if we had our Director of City Planning there, because we are going through a comp plan, right? So as we're doing a comprehensive plan, this should be a part of that conversation. So if we would, I think it'd be helpful to just invite them as well.
Yeah, and as, as we set this up, I'll make sure to connect with everyone and make sure that all the folks, that members want to be at the table are at the table, you know?
Okay. Thank you. Um, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. We'll work with the, uh, Councilwoman Warwick in the clerk's office to get that scheduled. Anything else from members? Councilman Mosley?
Uh, on a lighter note, I wanted to, Kendrick, congratulate all of the forty-some thousand participants in the marathon uh, that this passed Sunday, that included myself running in, in the half marathon and, um, you know, as, as good as it felt to cross the finish line, my legs are now punishing me, um, you know, for that. But, uh, you know, the folks at the marathon, uh, were great. DPW was amazing. Public Safety was amazing. It wasn't just city police. I saw county law enforcement as well as state law enforcement, um, out. And, you know, uh, the fact that it was Star Wars Day added to the fun. I had my R-two-D-two outfit on, which was, was a crowd favorite. Definitely, you know, helped get me through Bloomfield and the strip district uh, as, as, as my legs were starting to give out. Um, but yeah, it was, it was a great day. And, you know, definitely whether you do the relay, the five-k, the one-miler, or the fitness test, it's just a great day i- i- in, in the City of Pittsburgh. So I was proud to participate. Want to give a shout out to all the folks, the thousands, probably thousands of folks throughout the city to help, you know, make it, including, you know, the onlookers and the spectators that spent hours out, you know, just to, you know, give us that boost that we need when we're at mile ten, mile eleven, or if you're doing the full mile twenty-two, mile twenty-three. So it was a great day in the City of Pittsburgh in light of, obviously, the challenges, you know, that, that we're facing as a region in light of the storm. But it was, you know, a silver lining on what's been a tough week in the city.
Thank you and congratulations. Councilman Wilson, then Councilman.
I just want to say, uh, thanks for those comments, uh, Councilman Mosley. And, uh, it's, it's good to hear that the fourth was, was, uh, with you.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. Just real briefly, I, um, just want to talk a little bit about what happened at your, your field, uh, Councilman Coghill. We had kids from Elliott, Westwood and, um, Brookline all laying on a field yesterday when an adult father got in a fight with a fifteen-year-old kid, beat the kid up and then fired a shot at him. And this is the second time we've had such an incident on a baseball field, um, within the year. And so I'm just gonna say that I think we need to talk about what we're doing to keep our kids and our families safe on those fields, on all the fields. This particular place has, I believe, a rec center. I think it would be great to have the rec centers open, you know, later, so there's adults in the area. But it's beyond that. I mean, it, it is, what are we doing? And I think one of the things I have said when I first got here, and I've been saying since I got here, and I keep getting reassured that we're doing some of these things, but one of the things I said is that we need to have trainings for anybody who gets permits, for the parents, for the coaches, for anybody that's working with our kids on the fields. You shouldn't, if you have to bring a gun to a field to watch your kid play, if, if you don't have total self-control, then don't come to the game or don't bring the gun. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous that our kids are in such jeopardy while they're supposed to be enjoying, yesterday, so many kids left that area in such trauma that it makes me sick that one person could do such, such damage to so many people because they had, couldn't control their temper in a split second. And so, and they beat up the fifteen-year-old kid. So, um, you know, if they're, if you're having an issue on the field or something, call the police, let them handle it and, and let other people, you know, handle who have, who are calmer. But just don't bring your gun out, uh, out of the car or whatever, onto a field when kids are there. So that's it for me. I just, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna look into more what we can do to try to make sure kids are safe. But I honestly don't know what more we can do. I mean, it's just, it's getting ridiculous. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, as Councilwoman Kell Smith said, we had some troublemakers from District Two come up to Brookline the other day and, um-
I don't need a gun. You better watch it.
But no, I really wanted to thank, uh, Commander Ripple. You know, he was on it right away. You know, hysteria going around, people, you know, rumors people were shot. Nobody was shot. Nobody was killed, thank God. Obviously, this is one of our biggest small parks that we have. At any given time, there's hundreds and hundreds of kids, whether they're in the rec center, on the court. I know Councilman Wilson's son plays at the deck hockey rink there, so, um, yeah. So, so, so I just really wanted to thank our, our police department and, and specific Commander Ripple for informing me, letting me know exactly, you know, where they were in the investigation and what happened. They did, I believe, have the person, uh, in custody now, or they at least know who it is. So, um, so, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at one o'clock, Council will hold an executive session on Bill eighteen oh two and eighteen oh three as it relates to litigation matters. Also this afternoon at two o'clock, Council will hold a cablecast post-agenda on EMS, police and the fire fleet, chaired by Councilman Coghill. Then tomorrow, Wednesday, May seventh, at ten a.m., Council will meet for our regular standing committee meeting. Speaker registration will close at nine a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the Council meeting webpage or call the clerk's office at four one two, two five five, twenty one thirty-eight. Uh, we need a motion to excuse the absent member. Approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
To move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned.